Now I better go up again. That's all right, I'll stay here.
No, never, never, never.
Can't get up without the cane.
All right.
Leave it like that. Don't worry about it.
Good evening, Kevin. The July 11th, 2018 meeting of Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Selly?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here. Please all stand for the pledge allegiance. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And hereby certify that this meeting had been published in a newspaper reporting to the open public meetings having been posted after required by law.
Thank you.
Put your speaker down a little bit.
Put it down more, okay. At first, I'd like to make an announcement. The meetings are now live, as promised, and I'd like to thank Kevin Siri for giving up his time to videotape the meetings for us. Thank you, Kevin. Presentations, I see none. Hearings. Denial of a taxi driver's license for Ebenamon Al Bakri. At this time, I'd like to turn the hearing over to the city attorney, Mr. Rayno.
Thank you, council president. Chief, if you can come up. Did not? If we can, then we can just put on the record. This is the appeal of a denial of a taxi cab license. Chief, can you just put on the record the reasons for the denial?
Sure. Mr. Al Bakri applied for a license, and I noticed while looking through his history that he was recently arrested. He also lied on his application, saying that he has not been, and for those reasons, we moved to deny him the taxi license.
And is Ms. Al Bakri here today to? Doesn't appear that he's here. Council president, so at this point in time, what would be in order is a motion to confirm, in light of the fact that there are no countervailing reasons than those laid out by the police department for the denial of the application. So we need a motion to confirm the denial.
Members, motion please.
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Reading and approval of previous minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of June 26, 2018.
So move. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Consideration of ordinances, public hearing, and final consideration, I see none. Ordinances for introduction, at this time, there are none. Public participation for resolutions and all general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? If anyone in the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. Yes, please state your name and address.
It's Lori Ann Vendetti, 33 and 38 Ocean Terrace. Congratulations to all of you. I wasn't able to come to the celebration party because I had family over, but congratulations. I'm looking forward to a new start in Long Branch.
Thank you.
The only, I don't know if people know me or don't know me. I was part of the Matosa Agreement years ago. We fought for our homes in Seaview Avenue, Ocean Avenue area. So just as new council people, I just would like you to, before you vote on things, to read stuff. I know the mayor and Dr. Selly had voted against one of our homeowners having a tax abatement. So in 2009, we settled with the city on court order, and that court order allowed the homeowners, if they did it timely enough, to file for a five-year tax abatement. Not the 30 years that everyone else gets in the city, but the five-year one. Some people have done it, some people haven't. So if you've improved your home, or if you built a new home in the Seaview, Ocean Avenue, Ocean Terrace, Marine Terrace avenues, you were eligible for that tax abatement because we settled with the city. So I still don't know why the mayor and Dr. Selly had voted no on that, and there might be reasons which I don't know about. I just, there's going to be other property owners coming up for that. There's more building in that area. I mean, our whole neighborhood changed. I mean, we kind of didn't win, but we, the whole neighborhood changed. So those people are entitled to it, and it goes with the property. It doesn't go with the person that owns the house. So if it comes up in front of you guys, I just wish you that, you know, look back at the 2009 agreement and just review it. If I'm wrong, then I stand corrected, but that's all.
So Lori, I can, let me just add to that, and I just want to let you know that since then, we've received a lot more information that we had not received before. Mr. Rayno has spent some time with it. We discussed it this evening, and we understand exactly your position. And I don't want to speak for the council, but we all agree with your position here.
I could have stayed home? No. No, I just wanted to congratulate you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll stay home. Come.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Anna. I can't say my address for safety reasons, but I'm from Long Branch. I wanted to know what you guys would be doing with places like Sarah's Avenue and other vacant lots that were supposed to be used for gardening, and a lot across the way from the community garden on Lippincott that would be ideal for a butterfly sanctuary?
For what, Anna? I'm sorry.
For a butterfly sanctuary or habitat.
I don't know. I can tell you that we just, I just had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Jones from Community Development yesterday, as a matter of fact. And so we're relooking at a lot of those possibilities.
And are you guys going to be reconsidering about the end of Florence and MacArthur Avenue? Because I heard from former mayor that he would be doing some kind of like beautification there, which I didn't think was necessary.
Well, I don't know, Mr. Hayes, you want to talk about that grant there?
Sure. We received a county open space grant, and we're doing a small beautification project at that area, making a small public pocket park. It's not a big project.
And with there being grass there right now, is it going to be paved over? Is it going to be a problem with drainage? Is there going to be any opportunity to grow things there?
No problem with drainage. It's going to remain grass, and we'll be planting several trees and shrubs in the area there as well, part of the project.
Okay.
Very passive, small recreation area.
There's a few paved paths, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
Couple of small paths, possibly a gazebo. That's it.
What was that last part? I'm sorry.
A small gazebo we're looking at putting there.
Okay.
Just for people to sit and relax.
Okay. And I'll probably talk to you, Ms. Wittes.
All right, that was it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anna.
Thank you.
Well, I'm learning to write things down instead of just going off the wall.
Name and address.
I'm Linda Swinby, and I reside at 157 Seventh Avenue Gregory School Apartments, Apartment D-106. I'm going to just read what I wrote. "If we are going to change Long Branch, then we need to find ways to be positive in marketing Long Branch. There has been enough complaints about Peer Village, Kushners, the rich, et cetera." I could go on, but I think it's time to stop the negative garbage that's kept, that's been put out there. We are individuals, and as, we as individuals and as a community, need to realize Peer Village is not all bad. There are free concerts at the boardwalk near Peer Village and great restaurants. I personally, back in March, went into McLunes. I mean, I was out there taking pictures of the storms, just out there alone, soaking wet, and went into this restaurant. But people were great. I was soaking wet. I had the best cup of coffee and the largest chocolate piece of cake. Mmm, yum. But all I'm seeing is that it's not all bad. People in Long Branch can go to the beach after 4:00 P.M. Great time to have a picnic, and great for families and individuals also. But people of Long Branch won't go to the beach because of the rich. Well, that's been said, and I unfortunately have been part of that and made that comment. Okay? At Ocean Fest, after the fireworks, I was walking home and saw people from Long Branch walking home from the fireworks. You know? There are people in Long Branch who go to Ocean Fest, watch fireworks, et cetera. My point, the old administration is gone. It's time to change our attitudes and dump the negative mindsets we have about Peer Village. We have a new mayor and council. Let's bring our concerns and ideas before the new administration with a new interest in making Long Branch great again. Okay. Do I have two questions for the council? Have you started marketing? Okay. Marketing. Okay. Started marketing. Number one. Oops. Oh, have you began a campaign to change the image of Long Branch? Meaning, example, the old buildings which existed on South Broadway but have recently been torn down. The image of the rundown buildings have been out there for 15 years. People don't forget and form opinions of, and I can give an example. When I came here, almost four years ago, I saw, and I had made comments and saw, and how, and from my own viewpoint. But take a look, when you're from Peer Village or Ocean Place and you saw those buildings, what would be your opinion? Would you kind of come into Long Branch? I don't think so. Okay? So. And number two, how have you come up with ideas to bring people from Peer Village and Ocean Place into the city of Long Branch? Those are my questions to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come up?
Hi.
Hi.
Congratulations. Once again, I know I've said it a million times, but congratulations. Lilian Grauman, 396 Second Avenue. So I have a lot of concerns, but my, the main focus for me tonight is Second Avenue and Overlook Drive, west of Woodgate from To Hoey. Speeding. I can't tell you how fast that traffic moves down Second Avenue. I mean, to a point where the other day, there was a fire truck barreling down the, barreling down Second Avenue, pulled over, and all of a sudden, as I go to pull back into the lane, a car comes speeding by me, almost hits me. I mean, this is, this is at night. You have to hear the fast cars. And what they're doing is you're monitoring the, I guess you're controlling the traffic on Ocean Avenue, because I see on weekends, you have people that sit at the traffic lights. So what people are doing is they're avoiding Ocean Avenue, and they're coming down Second. And they're just, I mean, when I say speeding, they're doing in excess of 40 miles an hour. On Overlook Drive, I was sitting on a porch, my friends own a house there. I also own a house in Elbraon. And cars just speeding down this road, and when you stop and you say, "Slow down," they give you the finger, or they'll come back around and they'll go twice as fast. You know, this has been an issue for a number of years, and I know it's tough. I don't know what you can do on Overlook, whether you can put speed bumps or rumble strips. Not sure what can be done there, because that is such a small area. They come down Hoey, and they make that right turn, and they just take off. On Second, you know, I don't know what can be done there. The pedestrian crosswalks, I don't know if we can put the, like in other areas, the stop for pedestrians, because there are a lot of pedestrians, especially around Morris Avenue, Cottage Place. And that's pretty much to Jason's attention, to your attention. Let's see if we can do something about that.
Chief Robecker, we, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
No, I have it written down. We can use some enforcement over there, Lori.
You're absolutely right, because I walked that neighborhood all the time I lived there. It's tough for me to cross Second Avenue and Matilda there, and then I go to Cottage. You're absolutely right.
Thank you, Lil.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Harold Cooper, 36 Rockwell. Madam President and esteemed council, Mr. Mayor, central administrators. I would like to thank to discuss the five-minute rule. I've been coming here a long time. I was here before it was a five-minute rule. I was here after it was implemented. Personally, I feel it's an infringement on our First Amendment rights. We as citizens of this town should have more than five minutes to discuss pertinent issues with our elected officials. Granted, I know people have used this as a bashing board to talk about individuals. That shouldn't be. One shouldn't be up here for 10, 15 minutes bashing Mr. Dangler because they don't like him, or anybody else. But certainly, in my time here, I've seen enough people come up here with pertinent information to divulge to you, with things that affected their situation here in the city, and only to be told, you know, you have one more minute, or time's up. I would like this council, in their infinite wisdom, to think about what I'm asking. I don't know if it's a state mandate, a municipal mandate, or whatever, but to me, it's horrifying that people who have legitimate cause to be standing up here discussing things with you, given or being told their time is up. You work for us, you are elected officials, and we're supposed to have every bit of consideration on that. Again, this shouldn't be something where I come up here to bash Dr. Selly. This isn't the place for it. Try to get a personal interview with her, and deal with it on that level, not on city time, not on public time. But certainly, I've been very, very, very unhappy with people coming up here, having legitimate reasons to be up here, and having to be told their time is up. Now, I understand that didn't come from you, council. It came from a negative administration that became bigger than they were supposed to be, and figured they no longer had to address the people. But I don't think anything of y'all like that. I admire and love all y'all up here. I'd like to take this time to publicly congratulate you, and I'm almost positive you'll do a fine job. I've known the mayor for a long, long time. I think he's a great person. I don't know what kind of mayor he's could be. That's yet to be distinguished. But I know that he'll continue to be, and probably always, a great person, along with most of y'all I know up here. But again, I'm very unhappy with the five-minute rule, and I hope you council takes some time to think about it and get back with us. Again, congratulations, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and congratulations. I'm Annette Benanti. I live at 55 River Gateway. And I'm glad to see on your literature that Long Branch is working for a green future. Think green, live green. I'm trying to do that in my own way. So I'd like to hear, like, what other things are going on in Long Branch to support an environment. Some other towns around are banning, like, single-use plastic bags and straws and, you know, things like that. There was an environmental commission, so I'd like to know when that's going to be reconstituted, because I'd like to attend and, you know, be more active. So I'm looking for, you know, ways to be, to be more active for the environment. Thank you.
Yeah, if you'd like to leave your name and address and phone number, we'll get in touch with you. We have been discussing our environmental commission as well, and, you know, expanding upon that. Our school's right now all sustainable and green, so we want to continue and move it forward with the city as well.
Okay, that's great. Glad to hear that.
So if you're here after the meeting, then I'll take your name and number down. Thank you.
So, and we're also, the, just so you know, as Madam President pointed out, the school system is one of the, has, gets the highest marks on sustainable jersey. And I've been in touch with Joe Grillo. I don't know if you're familiar with Joe, and we've just been missing each other back and forth. I actually saw him last night. So he's, he thought that we lapsed back in 2015 on that, so we're going to try to resurrect that in a big way as well. So I'm just going to get in touch with him. And then, of course, as Rose pointed out, you know, there's, we have a Green Committee, the Environmental Commission, and some other groups as well.
Yeah, there, information on the website, T.C. website, has a lot of information about some of our initiatives.
But any suggestion, additional suggestions you may have, or any ideas, please let us know as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Camille Deronan. My address is 525 Ocean Boulevard. I want to add my congratulations to the others for your election, and I also want to thank the mayor and the council for closing the park between Brighton Avenue and West End Avenue and bringing it back to being a green acres park as it has been for 30 years. The benches, the picnic tables, the umbrellas, and everything is really getting a very positive response from people who are going to the beach at West End. So I just want to say thank you, and we are happy with it.
And thank you, Camille. I'd like to thank especially Mr. Hayes and especially Mr. Zubba, because Stan, those were, those benches and the picnic tables were kits, and it just, and the city stained them, and you built the planters from scratch, and it's just, it's very nice. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jack Mamie. I live in Maplewood, just over the border in Oakhurst. I would also like to expand on the environmentalism. I would like to know if the city was considering doing an energy audit on all their buildings. I have some experience with that. By the way, I do know Joe Grillo pretty well. He and I are friendly. So that's a good step as well. So an energy audit can reveal things like changing light bulbs to upgrading insulation, or windows to more advanced, like triple pane windows, things that are, you know, anything from the low-hanging fruit, which is low cost and high return, to things that are more difficult. And I'm sure that there's quite a bit the city can save, and I believe there are also, not only state, but federal grants that the city can get to take on these projects.
Thanks, Jack. Kevin, do you know, have we ever considered an energy audit in the past, or?
We haven't done an actual audit. We've done a number of upgrades. We filed for some grants, received some efficient lighting grants that we did throughout a number of our buildings. We just worked with the library on a large project for windows in that building, and we're just in the process of finishing a new heating and air conditioning system in this building. All, you're trying to get to more energy-efficient operation, but we haven't done a formal audit at this point.
Also, would the city consider putting in some electric vehicle charging stations, you know, in more, in the more heavily trafficked areas? So.
We've talked about that. We haven't gotten it off the ground yet. We have considered it.
Okay. Just so you know that the costs of the charging stations have come down considerably over the last few years. I know that they currently sell for about $500 apiece, when they, they used to go for around $3,000 to $5,000. All right.
Jack, are you familiar with any companies or groups that do these energy audits?
I'm familiar with a few. Mostly engineering firms. There are state-approved, like state-appointed firms that are, that are vetted to do these kinds of things. So if you want, I can get in touch with you.
Well, we could ask the engineer. Lou, do you know anything about that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are, and there is a pretty active state program, and you're right, they have approved vendors and a pretty approved program, and a number of the municipalities I've been involved in have done them and gone through the audit process. So it might be worth contacting the state to start there. And obviously, your engineering, your engineer would be the one who would oversee it, but, but as, as you said, there are state-approved vendors who already have the program in place.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vince Lepore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. In regards to the prior speaker on the Matosa Settlement Agreement, the fact is, Ms. Selly, you thought about doing it again on Matosa. And Mr. Pallone, you joined her. The record of this city on property rights and gentrification on the oceanfront has been deplorable, and I may add forced gentrification. The legal guns remain on target. The legal triggers are in position. You will remain on lock-on. I requested on July 2nd 50 members of a transition team that Mr. Pallone stated he had at your July 1 swearing-in on the public record. Received the letter telling me that on the Oprah request, it's not a public record what Mayor Pallone says. So therefore, I can't get the 50 names. But I was provided nine names. One of the names is Greg LaLevieve. Reason I bring it up is from the public record to the public record. Greg LaLevieve, member of the Team Pallone Transition Team, was supportive of the Pallone campaign via Stronger Foundations and the Operating Engineers Union. He put out a mailer discussing the corruption of Long Branch government. It read, quote, "Over the past 30 years, Mayor Schneider has ruled Long Branch like his own corrupt kingdom. He's even been accused of taking bribes from a convicted felon-turned-FBI informant. His own council member even pleaded guilty for taking money. Enough is enough." The convicted felon FBI informant, of course, was Solomon Dweck. The council member was none other than John Faz Zambrano. What the mailer failed to produce is approximately, over the eight-year period, Pallone is an independent to the council, witnessed demands from the people. In December of 2010, a representative of Long Branch City for Good Government demanded the council... the council launch an investigation into the Dweck testimony on Schneider. Miss Sully refused. Team Pallone member, John Pallone, in a rare instance raised his voice to the group's representative that the statute of limitations ran out, and there was no need to pursue it. Four years ago, John Pallone joined the Schneider team and was re-elected with them. Over the last few years, litigation occurred, by the way, I request one-minute notification, that litigation in Lepore versus City of Long Branch and Scott Kelly versus City of Long Branch concerning an illegal house of worship in the West End with two exempt, two tax-exempt parsonages. All throughout this, four years ago, Mr. Pallone and Miss Sully took campaign contributions from the bunch behind that illegal house of worship. The ultimate part of that battle was the legal deposition of Solomon Dweck. I, Lepore, and Scott Kelly were in Baltimore to take that deposition. To make a long story short, Mr. Pallone, Miss Sully, and the rest of the Schneider council spent $160,000 of taxpayer money to prevent the deposition of Solomon Dweck.
Not true.
Counsel, fast forward. On July 1st, you renewed the contract to the Aaron Ancel Grim Law Firm, which over the past 20 years has had an intricate part of Solomon Dweck in this city. The question I have for counsel tonight, yes or no, will you authorize a criminal investigation of Adam Schneider's tenure for mayor and officials in the Schneider administration, an investigation of corruption? Answer the question, yes or no. I'll start with Ms. Vogt.
I don't know that I have enough information right now to be able to tell you yes or no.
Mr. Viera?
This is the second time on the seat. We have to look forward into that to, to give you an answer, yes or no, then.
Mr. Dangler?
After giving the proper information, then I would make my vote.
Miss Sully? Will you authorize an investigation into Adam Schneider's tenure as mayor, a criminal administrative investigation?
You talking to me?
Yes, Miss Sully.
I have no comment.
No comment. Ms. Wittes?
Your time is up.
Ms. Wittes, yes or no?
I would have to look into it. I cannot give you an answer tonight. Anyone else like to come up?
Hello, good evening. Patty Faraki, 246 Jerome Avenue, Oakhurst. I just had two questions concerning Takanasi Lake. The, I guess, the ladder system, the, the draining and the filling of the lake, has that been happening, and who was in charge of that?
Go ahead. It's being performed by the developer, part of his responsibility for Takanasi Development Project. And my understanding, i- if it's not done, it's just about done.
Okay. So that would, it would be the developer's responsibility to make sure that it's drained or filled as needed?
It, once the, once the, the fish ladder is installed, then the proper level of the lake will be restored. It was lowered to allow for that, and it's traded some emails in the last few days, and I, and I believe it's just about done, if it's not complete today.
I would have more questions on that, but I'll wait. The other question was, I happened to notice that there were lifeguards at Pullman Avenue. And they actually said that they were going to be there on weekends throughout the whole entire summer. Is the city of Long Branch paying for that? And is that at all the public, or the public access beaches? Were the lifeguards?
No, they're, they're part of the lifeguard program, and they were put down there, Patty, because there were a lot of
Drownings.
rescues.
Right.
And as you know, you know, you've gone from the paid beaches, and it just seems to move south to a, to a free beach. So we felt that it would be a good idea to guard that beach
Okay.
due to the rescues. There's not a plan right now to, you know, to have that as a paid beach, and according to Mr. Zubba, the, the budget that we currently have should cover the guards on that beach.
Okay. Are the
So they'll continue to be there.
Very good. Are there going to be lifeguard stands at some of the other public access spots, do you know, or is it just that particular location?
Not at this time. I, I mean, Stan, I don't, at this time, it would be just there.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Colleen Rose. I'm at 49 Norwood Avenue. I made this for the city of Long Branch, and it represents many, many things. And I made it symbolically, and part of it is an apology. Two weeks ago, a lot of you were sitting out, and I mentioned a whole lot of things, you know, you want to spread events across the town, and it was like, oh, and it's, I know things take time. So part, I'll show you the shell that represents that. Of course, it's all shells, because Long Branch is your community. The bottom shell is the earth. The back shell is the universe, or what Thomas Jefferson would call divine providence. The pearls are the wisdom that I wish for you to be able to conduct the town business with, and all of us to have. The Swarovski crystals are the inspiration, because you'll need plenty of that. Now, believe it or not, there are shells that look exactly like hearts, and the heart shells are right here. And that is for empathy and governing, and the love that we all have for the community. The coral represents all the streets and all the avenues and everything that comes off of it. Now, the many squirrel shells represent the different things that you are going to begin to do in the town. And it's a journey. It doesn't just happen all at once. So as far as what I said two weeks ago, things take time. I know that. Some of your journeys are going to start like this, and they're going to come to a pinnacle. Some of them are going to start small, and they're going to open very large at the end. But that includes all of them. The clam shells represent how we hold each other dear, the entire town, and how we should behave towards one another. The starfish represent the individuals in the town. This represents the people that are here and have stayed here. This represents the people and the children we have raised that then go out into the world and take what we have taught them, and they share it with the rest of the world. The starfish, I did put sparkles on because it's rainbow. That way, it includes everybody. Now, the interesting one is all of these darker shells, they're not all white, they're all different colors. If you look at them, there's even a purple one in here somewhere. The darker shells represent where you and we will fail, because nobody just goes straight up. It's not the way it goes. There are failures along the way. There are plateaus along the way, and maybe we learn the most from them. They also, when you look at the whole thing, and you look at the whole picture, it's the ones that represent the failures that give the entire thing dimension. So this is for the city of Long Branch, and best of luck to all of you. It's nice to see you sitting up here, not in the audience, as you were.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you. Beautiful.
You know, that, that is gorgeous, and if you could give us what you wrote up in terms of what the different, that, that would be wonderful for us to have.
Thank you, Colleen. It's beautiful. Where do we put it?
In your office. Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, I need a motion to close the public participation. Oh, I'm sorry.
Someone.
Rice Canetto Maza. Some of you know me as Beatrice, if you've known me for a long time. So I live in Long Branch. This is my son, Peter. Trying to bring him with me, and I might need some extra minutes also, so, thank you. Before I get into it, I just want to address Mr. Rainoni. Is that how I said?
Yes, and, and actually, you said it correctly, because most people don't pronounce the A.
Okay, I'm very pleased to see a new lawyer in town.
Thank you.
One that does not live in town, and one that has a lot of experience with things like rent control, developers, political corruption, and also legislation. While I'm not entirely trustful of Democrats either, I certainly do appreciate the experience and what it could bring to Long Branch. And with that, I just want to touch on what Vinny had said. I, it's funny, you'd think I would know Vinny personally, but I don't. I always listen to him. And he ran out of time when he was asking each of you, and I understand that you can't really answer his question. I understand that. But in light of what he said, I really do hope that you come together as a group with our new attorneys and take a look at what has been going on in these last 28 years, because I think a lot of people in this town would agree that our local administration has been blocked in every direction by one attorney or another that has a lot of ties to Long Branch. And it's something that makes me uncomfortable. I don't know if there's any there there, but that's that. So now onto what I was going to say. I know there's no water, but I have really low potassium, and I'm sick right now, so I just need it near me. Some house cleaning, the beach and the parks look awesome, especially West End Park. I too did notice the lifeguard on Pullman, and I was a little taken aback by that. One, I'm happy, because no one needs to die when they're not supposed to be swimming there. And congratulations and thank you to Rescue, who managed to get there quick enough to an unmanned beach and save people that were stuck in the ocean that shouldn't have been there. However, I think it's really important that we don't give people the impression that the public access beaches adjacent to their homes are their privately beaches now going to be funded by Long Branch and have Long Branch lifeguards there. I think that whoever those swimmers are, thank you that they are safe, but they should have been fined. And I think that we need to come up with some kind of strategy to address the traffic that goes there with the intention to swim and the people that have parties who treat the, those beaches like their own private beach and have parties and bring swimmers of their own. So, but good job, Long Branch, for doing that and getting there. They're very lucky. I'm very happy to be here in front of a new council. It's very refreshing. I think, you know, we all have the choice now to do what's right. And a lot of the things I bring to council are because, you know, my son's going to grow into an independent adult here, and I, you know, it's really important what kind of community there is for him here to become a part of. I've, I've spoken to you all, each probably, about something that's really been bothering me. And Rose, I spoke with you last week and asked you to review this and said, I wasn't going to bring it to council. I wanted you guys to review it first. And I got sick and didn't get a chance to email it. So I just want to reintroduce it, and I brought a printed copy of all the documentation, so you guys can make copies and take it back, and I'd really love for you to have a session on this. And I'm bringing back the topic of that cops grant application that was awarded to Long Branch Police Department by the Department of Justice. There are a lot of things in this application that bother me. Number one, the school district wasn't consulted when the application was completed by the police department. I did send a copy to Dr. Salvatore, and the grant application talks about needing the funds based on youth assault. And the reason why it's so disturbing that the school district wasn't consulted is because it names the school district and school-based youth services as partners in being part of the solution. The part that really upset me, and I never would have known about this grant, except one late Friday night, I found an article on WOBM's website that says, "Long Branch in line for federal funds for new police hires." Thanks, Patty. I actually have one minute. Okay. Long Branch qualified for a share of $98 million for the Community Oriented Policing Services Hiring Grants Program. As part of, can I add his time? I'm sorry. Can I add time for my son? So the part of this that really bothered me is that with Jeff Sessions putting out this program in the Trump administration, part of the requirement was to certify cooperation with ICE and Homeland Security. In a town that really was founded in immigration, in a town that has people and welcomes people from all over the world, and especially in a town where we have many people who are in the process of, you know, becoming citizens, I found this very offensive. The certification, just bear with me one second. The certification is the last page of the application, and it states, "On behalf of the applicant named, entity named below, I certify under penalty of perjury to the Office of Community Oriented Police Services, U.S. Department of Justice," that all, you know, is true and correct. They will cooperate. The applicant, its governing body has implemented, will implement rules, regulations, policies, practices that ensure any governing bodies, correctional detention facilities, advance notice as early as practicable to DHS regarding scheduled release date of any alien in the jurisdiction's custody when DHS requests notice. I started thinking about this when there was a Portuguese man that was arrested on Ocean Avenue, and there was a new cop, a rookie cop, that had taken him down. And I thought, that's really cool. We have a cop who speaks Portuguese, who could speak to the, you know, man being arrested. Unfortunately, it went on a chase, but he was detained, and the article had said that immigration was notified. So I started asking, who, who notified immigration, and nobody would tell me. And then I found this, and I spoke with Jason, you know, when I first found it. I brought it up a couple months ago. I was told that nothing changed. It was no big deal. This was signed by Hayes, and it was signed by Jason Robach, Acting Police Chief. Mr. Aaron has all over, has a signature in this document. You know, we don't have to be in a sanctuary city to do the right thing. And really, what I'd like to see done, because I don't think that cooperating with ICE, especially in, in light of what we are all finding out, I don't think that this represents Long Branch values. I don't think that proper discussion was made regarding this application, especially if members of the previous council didn't even know about it. The school was not consulted. And I'd like us to give Jeff Sessions his money back. It's $150,000 about a year for five years, and Mr. Schneider's administration was very proud of the fact that Pure Village paid for all the police. proud of the fact that Pure Village paid for all the police in town, and when you think about it, $150,000 is a drop in the bucket, right? I'd say that the people of Long Branch would be happy to raise that amount of money if our police department really needed it, but I think that it sends a message to our community and the administration that we don't want to cooperate with ICE. Not saying we're a sanctuary city, but that's also, you know, there are people getting arrested because they're on the suspended license list, or because of driving infractions. You have people being
You have one minute left.
Thank you. You have people being threatened with denaturalization. We have a student body that is 20 to 30% Latino, and I don't want our children to be afraid. And one of the things I asked Rose to do, because she was on the school board, and love all the work the school board has done in recent years, I asked her to maybe bring up and consider a policy that Hackensack put in place, where they basically just reinforced their immigration practices, and promised that they would not allow ICE or DHS on property without a warrant, and this is especially important now that we're putting Long Branch police officers in our schools, so. Thank you all, I don't know if you have any questions for me?
Thank you so much. If you leave everything with us, we'll definitely look into it, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll leave this.
Thank you. Anyone else? I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we're on the part of the resolutions. We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda? Any motion?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Yes. I need a motion to approve the listed applications. So moved. Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Wittes?
Yes. Now we're to the portion of the miscellaneous business for the good of the order. Councilman Dangler, do you have anything to say this evening?
I don't know, just thank everyone for coming out this evening, and just bear with us, but we do plan to make you proud as far as sitting up here representing the city. Thank you very much.
Councilman Viera?
Thanks again for coming, and keep coming, don't ever not stop. We like a lot of audience, and give us a little time, we'll put our feet on the ground, and we're working hard for you guys. That's what we're here for.
Councilwoman, let's vote.
I think we have a consistent message for you tonight. We're all so pleased that you're here, we're all thrilled to actually have work start. I'm very encouraged with a lot of the statements that were said tonight and a lot of the topics that were brought up, because what is being talked about is the same thing that we're talking about right here, as we're putting our plan together moving forward, which we're going to be able to present to you shortly, we're excited about being able to do that. We're on the same page on so many things, and to me, I think it's very optimistic, so we're excited, and I think you'll, I think you will feel that same sense that we're in sync with the issues that you're bringing up.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Dr. Selly?
I'm delighted with the meeting tonight. I counted the speakers, we had 10 speakers. That's wonderful. I'd like to have everybody come back every week, so we can see you, and you can tell us your problems, and if not, we'll see what we can do about it. I have a couple of serious things. First of all, tomorrow is Councilwoman Vogt's birthday, so we're going to say happy birthday, Anita.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And on July 17th, our mayor has a birthday, so happy birthday, Mayor. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Mayor Pallone, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you all for coming. So just so you know, that camera up in the top right there, that's recording, and that's actually the camera that is sending the link to the website and being streamed live on Facebook and so forth, and that's all remote, and it's very cool, actually. I wanted to thank Kevin also, because Kevin was here as a backup, just in case we had some issue with that, but apparently, as long as that red light is on, we're good. But thank you, Kevin, and thank you all again for being here tonight.
And I also would like to thank everyone for coming this evening, and thank you for caring about our town, and we look forward to working with every one of you, and we hope you have a great evening. I need a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again, thank you.